Good evening, I'll call this meeting to order of the Hudson Board of Education Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand nine, six thirty. Thanks for coming this evening. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
(inaudible)
Board members have a copy of the agenda in front of them as well as their laptops. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the latest agenda that we have.
So moved.
We have a motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those oppose, motions approved. Next item is the student staff recognitions, and I believe this evening we're going to recognize the two thousand nine fall athletics.
Correct. We had a very successful fall season, and with us this evening are several of our sports students, and Whitney Daniels will be coming forward. She's representing, she's one of our student ambassadors that Mr. DeVos has started this season, and so Whitney will be leading our showcase this evening.
Okay, first of all, sorry, it was last winter that she started. We talked, I don't know if any of you were here, last year, winter sports and spring sports. We talked at that meeting. First, I'd like to introduce volleyball players Amber Sadoff and Natalie Horstman.
I'm Natalie.
Some of the highlights of our season were that we won our home tournament for the second time ever, actually. And we beat Rice Lake, and this is the first time in over four years, so it's a good accomplishment.
And we placed fourth in the conference and third in the region, and we made it to regional finals.
All right, thank you. Congratulations volleyball team.
Okay, next is boys football. We'd like to introduce Chaz Larson, Zach Beinlick, Bo Holmes, Arthur Vinzant, Andy Adholm.
Welcome, guys.
I'm Zach Beinlick.
I'm Bo Holmes.
I'm Andy.
Arthur Vinzant.
And I'm Chaz.
We were BRC Conference champs. It was the first time since nineteen eighty-two. We were nine and two this year with wins against Menominee for the second time in a row, and we got the Little Brown Jug back against River Falls, and nine wins, two losses, and we made it to the second round of playoffs. Yeah, that's it.
What a great season. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to introduce girls swimming with Noah Anderson and Melli Meyer.
Hi, I'm Melli Meyer. We had a great season this year. We made it, we made second in conference, and we did really good in sectionals, or really well in sectionals. We dropped some time and had some really great races, and the coaches from other teams really complimented our facilities and our pool, and they always like to have sectionals at our pool. This is the fourth year, I think, that we've had sectionals or conference at our pool, so they really compliment us for our facilities and our hospitality, and we had a fun year.
Hi, I'm Noah Anderson. I'm one of the other captains, and I just wanted to say what an amazing year we had this year. We had an amazing group of girls, a lot of fun times, and especially, I've been on the team since I was a freshman, so definitely one of the most fun years I've had. And I definitely want to say special thanks to our three coaches, Kristen, Dick, and Kelly, so.
All right, thank you. Congratulations swimming team.
Next is boys sweat, no. Boys soccer, Nick Lund and Noah Harmon.
You guys look familiar.
I'm Nick.
I'm Noah.
And we finished sixteen, five, or fifteen, six, and four as our overall record, and nine, one, and two as our conference record, and we finished second in the conference. And then we made it to the sectional final, and we lost in the end.
And we also had four players go honorable mention, three players go second team, and three players go first team. So that's about it.
Thanks, Noah and Nick. Good job. Congratulations soccer team.
Next is girls golf. Molly Fastbinder and Ellie Anderson.
I'm Ellie.
I'm Molly. First, I'd just like to start by saying that we had a great group of girls this year, and another great, successful season with our coach Jackie Gunderson, and a lot of the, all the other teams really looked up to us and saw how fun we had, and it was really, it was a great season.
We placed first in conference, first in regionals, and third in sectionals. And three of the girls on the team placed first team all conference, and yeah, it was a great year.
Super. Thank you. Congratulations, girls golf.
Now, Julia Johnson with girls tennis.
Hi, I'm Julia. Okay, to start the season off, we had a really good season, to say the least. We, our record was eighteen and six, and that's like tied for the most wins ever we've had in girls tennis. And we got second in the Big Rivers Conference tourney, and third at sectionals. And a good thing, like, was for, all four of our singles players advanced to sectionals, and that was like the first time all four of them have gone, I think, I think that's what my coach said. And I'm supposed to mention that I was like the Big Rivers Conference champion for my flight, so, yeah.
Way to go. Thanks, Julia. Congratulations, girls tennis.
Okay, last but not least, Coach Krupa was named Wisconsin's Cross Country Coaches Association Hall of Fame. In cross country, we have Jacob Ball, Matt Rudquist, Ryan Cromer, Martin Zeiss, Josh Robers, Nick Schumacher, Luke Westerbarth, and Rachel Zachar.
Hi, I'm Jake. So we had a pretty good season this year. We only lost three meets, including state. We won conference for like the fifth time in a row, and even if I, I won, and if, even if I would have dropped out, the team still would have won, so we did really good. And we also won sectionals again, and we placed pretty well at state, ran together, and we got fifth place, so. It was a good season.
Hi, I'm Rachel Zachar, and I just want to say that all the girls did really good this year, and I guess the only thing I say is, this is my third year at state, and I was just really happy I made it because this is my senior year, and I wanted to end it with a bang.
All right, thank you. Coach?
I'd also like to add that the boys are all-state academic, and Rachel is third-year all-state academic individual. And they're also, I don't know how many, Rachel has been four years all-conference, and Jacob and Ryan, they were one and two in the, in the conference meet, so they were individual champion and then runner-up. So that's awesome because that doesn't happen too often.
That is great. Thanks, guys. Coach Krupa, we, we knew you're a Hall of Famer, but it was good to get that confirmation. Thank you and congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, the superintendent's report. Mary?
You know, we started, I think it was last meeting, recognizing presentations throughout the state that staff members are, have been asked to present or have been selected to present. You know, this is really outside recognition by other educational leaders of the work that's being done in Hudson, the best practice and certainly the quality of that work. So we want to continue that with talking about some other evidence of that work being recognized. And when we talk about presentations, we just want to point out that when someone presents at a conference, it helps to reaffirm certainly the practices that we have, but the reflection that they do and the preparation for that conference really helps them to actually improve those practices. So we win not only in having educators recognized throughout the state, but also the impact that it has on our own practices back home. So I'm going to turn it over to Cory McIntyre, Director of Student Services, because this evening we're going to be recognizing presentations by student services staff. Cory?
Well, thank you Superintendent Boden, Eggerbrot, and board members. It's my pleasure tonight to share with you three opportunities that some of our student services staff will have to showcase just a few of their outstanding programs and showcase some of the examples of their outstanding individual talents as well. First of all, we have a opportunity to present at the post-school outcomes presentation at the Council for Exceptional Children Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. This conference attracts anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand teachers annually, so it's a very large conference and kind of a high, high honor to present there. A little bit of background, and you can see this in your materials as well, in August of this year, middle school and high school staff from the district had an opportunity to collaborate with not only our local Cooperative Educational Service Agency, or the CISA, but also our Wisconsin Post-High School Outcomes Project Director and the National Post-School Outcome Center staff to pilot a data use toolkit. And as a result of this pilot, the district has committed to collecting post-school data in the years where reporting's not required, but we're going to continue to do that reporting and use those results to our benefit, and that will in the end provide guidance for the department and the development of programs and district goals to enhance our students' post-school outcomes as they leave our system. It'll also assist teachers in implementing practical, efficient, cost-effective, and sustainable strategies to collect and use outcome data to improve our services. We, we need to figure out what we write in their plans. Do they actually go out and accomplish those things once they leave our system, and if they're not, we're going to make changes. As a result of this program, Charlotte Elverston and Deanne Unra from the National Post-School Outcome Center at the University of Oregon have invited Robyn Spencer Beck from our department to present with them at this conference in Nashville. Like I said, it's a highly prestigious conference. They'll be able to present their information that they already had presented at the August Leadership Conference in Washington DC in August. So this is a very rare opportunity for us, and really going to springboard our, our services just as a continuous improvement effort to let data tell us if we're accomplishing our, our goals. Next, I want to talk just a little bit about another opportunity we have. Tara Tuchel and Tracy Johnson from Willow River are teachers of students with autism, and they've been asked to speak at a conference put on by the Western Wisconsin Autism Advocacy and Consulting Center on February twelfth at the University of Wisconsin River Falls. And both of these teachers have presented in multiple, at multiple conferences, including recently the Minnesota State Autism Conference. So that's another honor that we've been able to, or an opportunity we've been able to take advantage of. Lastly, the Hudson School District Strive Program has been chosen to present at the Wisconsin Graduation Summit on exemplary practices in increasing graduation numbers. This is in Pawkeye on December ninth. And this summit is really to build local capacity, to reduce dropouts, increase graduation numbers and rates, and with special attention on students of color and students with disabilities. And this is directly tied to Dr. Evers statewide initiative, every child or graduate. It's a direct, summit's really directly related to that. So the Hudson staff will be led by Cynthia Mitchell, the lead teacher for the Strive Program. So, you know, these three examples are just another set of, or series of opportunities that recognize the talents of our teachers, that serves as another example that the Hudson schools are being recognized as a leader in education, and we're very proud of the work they're all doing. So thank you very much for allowing us to, to update you on those items.
Thanks, Cory. Very interesting. We'll be interested here, the reports from those various activities that you're going to be attending. Board members have any questions for Cory or about this information?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to reports, impact of increasing enrollment on middle school concept. Mary, you going to kick off?
I'm going to ask Principal Dan Koch of the middle school to come up and join me as I start off here. Last month, we talked about the growing enrollment at the middle school, and the capacity of the middle school again is a thousand one hundred and twenty-five students. And we are, this year, based on our official count, eighty-six students over capacity. The middle school grew by forty-six students from last year, and when we look out to twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, Hazel Reinhardt's projections give us a number of two hundred and eighty-two more students than where we are right now. Knowing that we'll be way over capacity, and knowing that the middle school, Dan and his staff have been feeling the crunch in their building, I ask him to come forward and talk about the middle school concept, which we really value as a community for meeting the educational and learning needs of our students during this time in their lives. And, you know, it aligns with our HSD twenty twenty-five. It's a really strong model of collaboration among teachers, and we want to make sure we preserve that model, but I have had, said at times, we're starting to erode it because of the number of students that we have at the school, particularly being over capacity. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan to speak to how the middle school philosophy and concept is really impacted by the growing enrollment that he has now and that we foresee in the future. Dan?
Thank you. You sort of covered the waterfront there, Mary, with, with your comments, but I do have, as you would suspect, probably some thoughts with respect to this. I have come before you, before, to indicate to you what the space for learning issues are with respect to the physical that, that we have. And obviously, with those concerns, and they have sort of come into focus more recently as the facility has received more and more students. Over a period of time, this isn't something that just happens right away, but over a period of time, you gradually begin to see the erosion of some of your fundamental concepts because you make adjustments, on one hand, that have a, sort of a reaction or counterpart, on the other hand. There is an irony in what I'm about to say to you with respect to the erosion of the, of the philosophy and the concept, because we've actually been doing very well as a middle school in our pursuit of our academic goals with our kids. And right up front, I need to tell you that that emanates very specifically from the staff that works in that building day in and day out, the fact that on every occasion, they demonstrate to me a can-do attitude, which I articulated in the note that was sent to the board, and this belief that, you know, we can, we can do this, we can make this work with respect to whatever roadblocks or hindrances seem to come before us. But we've, we've made adjustments, and I'm going to give you just a quick example of, of one of the adjustments that speaks a little bit more to our, to our issue, and that is this, that in our program, you know, we have the core courses in our program, the math, science, language arts, social studies, reading and communication cores, and then, as is typical of any quality middle school, there's an exploratory program, and we have that as well. We had to make an adjustment several years ago with respect to the exploratory program in that we moved to add an exploratory course because we were trying to diffuse the numbers of students that we had in our classes. In other words, bringing the class sizes down, we added an exploratory course to spread those numbers out so they were more manageable for those teachers. The upshot of doing that in this respect was, we took a course that we were teaching, exploratory courses that we were teaching over a seven-week time period, and they now became six-week classes. We accomplished the goal of keeping the class sizes down, keeping those class sizes reasonable, and that was a very important and is a very important goal. But by the same token, we've reduced the opportunities for students to experience those exploratory classes by a week throughout the entire rotation. And that's an impact that, on the surface, you don't, you don't feel as though, well, this is a really big deal, but over time, it has a, it has a significant impact on student achievement. And this is an example of, of some of what we've, what we've had to do. Now, our philosophy and all the components of our philosophy are very interconnected, and I emphasize very significantly, is that thunder or something that's, you know? I hope that's in agreement with what I have to say. Our philosophy relies upon connecting a number of, of component parts, and at the core of that are the relationships that we have with students, between students and teachers at this level. This is, it's a critical time in the development of our students, and many of you are aware of that. You've heard me talk about it before, and many of you have responded in kind, that you recognize how challenging this time period is in, for young adolescents. What we've done, again, responding to those numbers, over the last two years, I believe, we have added core teachers, and you've heard me refer to those as our teachers on carts. But what happens when, when you do that, and we have those core teachers teaching in two different grade levels, so the availability of those teachers to connect with students is reduced. And again, over a period of time, this has a dramatic impact on, on student achievement. They operate fundamentally on a, a different type of, of schedule. It's a schedule that we developed for the cart teachers so that they can basically solve our size and our growth problems where we need them the most. We have teachers now who are currently teaching social studies both in the sixth and in the eighth grade. And you can see logically that when they're in the eighth grade, they're not available to the students in the sixth grade during the normal team planning times, which again is sort of at the, you know, the epicenter of, of who we are. Team planning is a very, very important function, and we cannot get all those teachers together. We now have difficulty dealing with RTI because we don't have the contributions of all of our teachers and the perspectives they have on students. We're not as able to respond to the needs of those kids. By the same token, we now have students in the houses that one or possibly two teachers don't even know. They don't know who they are because they're in the classes of the teachers who are on carts. So the five of the original core teachers simply don't know who those kids are, which makes it very difficult for us, again, when we are getting together in the team, in our team meetings to discuss student issues or how we can best meet the needs of our kids. So this does have, and I believe it will have, potentially a significant impact on student achievement as time moves on, as time rolls forward. We are doing everything that we believe is prudent to negate that as much as, as we can, and I think, you know, we just, I think it was in the last board meeting, you know, we received some recognition for some success that our school has had, and that's an example of the fact that we are trying to counter, we are trying to combat this. But you can only run with that for so long, and I think everybody would certainly understand that there is a point in time where the sort of can-do attitude, and we can make it work approach that the staff takes is just, it reaches a sort of a stress point where it's just not, it's not possible to meet the needs of all of those kids in the, in the houses, and that would be, you know, a terrible loss, I think, not only for the kids who pass through our halls on a day-to-day basis, but for this community in general. Because years ago, and Nancy, you'd have to tell me about what the year was when the referendum passed, but I've said time and time again, I think, Dan, you were maybe on the board at that time as well. We, at that time, this community stepped up, recognized that there was an organizational format, there was a concept, there was a philosophy that was well-suited to the education of adolescents, and it was the house concept, part of the middle school philosophy. And in their wisdom, and I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure even then they understood that they'd hit a pot of gold, you know, when, when they came up with this. This is the best way. This, it is widely regarded from the research standpoint and everything we know about dealing with young adolescents. This is the very best way to reach those kids, making a larger school into a smaller, more intimate setting. And fundamentally, we have nine mini schools that operate in our building. When this community stepped forward with that and supported that, number one, it's been very attractive to me when I interviewed and, and got the job, but it also told me that this community had a vested interest in the development of young adolescents, ages ten to fourteen, and that they were willing to support this concept and this philosophy to advantage those kids the best way they could. This concept supports very well in its interdisciplinary way, because that's how the houses are organized, the, the tenants of HSD twenty twenty-five and what we're trying to do with, with that vision. It plugs in very nicely to that. It supports, I think, everything that we believe is important for adolescent learners. The roundabout speech that I'm making here is simply to draw back to this one point. We have an emerging situation, and I'm not going to sit here and believe for a moment you don't know what it is because you do, you've been hearing from me, and, and Mary has, has led the board in many discussions with respect to this, but it is starting to encroach upon the philosophy that we kind of hold very, very dear, and one that we know from all the research is very effective at reaching adolescent learners. In the memo that I, that I sent to you, the, certainly things are bulleted there, and I'm not certainly going to go through those things all over again, but you, you had the opportunity to take a look at that. And the, on the second page, you're actually, I guess, on yours it would be the third set of bullets, if you were to scroll down and take a look at it. What we're talking about here, and the items that I'm referencing are the teachers that are on carts and that they have a, a separate and somewhat unique schedule. It does affect our communication patterns in the building. It certainly impacts relationships between students and teachers, and it has a direct impact on our ability to deliver the curriculum and certainly impact student achievement. I've already mentioned that, you know, students, or excuse me, teachers are, and have been unavailable for counsel with, with students, and that is also a critical part of what we do on a daily basis, that opportunity for students to get additional support, additional instruction when they are struggling in one of the content areas. They have that period, they have that time set aside where they can meet with those teachers. I've also mentioned that, you know, it's, the part that's sort of most disturbing to many of us is the fact that we have teams in which some of our teachers don't know who the students are. And I charge our teachers every year with, the most fundamental tenet of the middle school philosophy is know your students, know your kids, know everything you can about them. This is going to be a launching pad to their success in the classroom. You have to do that. And we've put them in a situation where we're making it more and more difficult for them to know who those kids are and what they're, they're capable of, as well as what their needs are in an academic sense. We have our core classes now. One of the, the nice things, and it might seem as though it was a nicety, but it, it sort of reinforces the concept that all of their core classes, they took in the house area in the same place. We now have some of those kids going to another location in the building to take those, to take those, those classes, which although it may seem somewhat superficial, is a breakdown of the, you know, of the organizational format that we have. The advisories are way too large. The teachers are not able to, again, make those connections and make those contacts. They do the best they can, and I want to continue to emphasize that because you've seen that we've had some, we've had some success. And I think this middle school is better today than it was three years ago, than it was five years ago, than it was fifteen years ago when I came. We are very fortunate with the quality of the staff that we have there working, working with these kids. But our counselor-student ratio is one to four hundred, and it's one to four hundred in a time period that is, you know, it's, it's absolutely violent, that these kids have opportunities to interact with counselors. Our counselors do a great deal of conferencing, especially with our eighth grade students. They also provide developmental guidance, part of the program that, that we have, but one to four hundred is a pretty sizable, that's a pretty sizable challenge. And then, you know, the, one of the things is, we, we simply couldn't and never have been in the last three, three years, four years or so, been able to get our student body together at one time, in one little body together at one time in one location. And there's a caveat, and I don't want to, I don't want to go public with when we violate the code, but, you know, when we have our fair thee well at the end of the year, and that's just the eighth grade, we literally fill the place. Many of you have been, been there when we've had those ceremonies. So we now only have two occasions during the year when we try to get the entire student body together. One of them will be tomorrow morning before the Veterans Day assembly. But that, we lose a sense of community when we're unable to do that. It's, it's fractured. We had a wonderful assembly that was basically organized by Diane Franklin. We had the Black Hawk helicopter, we have seen that in the paper come. Thank goodness it was outside, that we were able to get the entire seventh grade there at that particular point in time. But these are the types of things, the adjustments that we make to accommodate the fact that, that our, our size is beginning to overwhelm our ability to be closely connected to our students. And the, the relationship piece sort of weaves its way through virtually everything we do, and I will remain eternally optimistic about our success academically as long as we're able to continue to maintain the relationship piece that we have in the building. And I don't mean for that to sound like, you know, that it's, it's this really, really close, close bond. It's not that, it goes back to what I charge the staff with, know your kids, know something about those kids so that you can connect with them in the classroom. That makes it easier from an instructional standpoint. It makes it much easier for students to relate not only to the teacher but to the material that they're, they're engaged in. So it's a, it's a, it's a bit of a challenging time we have right now. Just to summarize, I think that our, you know, our communication patterns in the building are being affected, our instructional teams, our students' sense of being connected, and in a more global way, I think the overall culture in our building is, is beginning to show some signs, being impacted by the fact that we are just a very big middle school. And as, I think, as middle schools go, we rank right up there in the state in terms of our, our overall, our overall size. So lastly, just to reiterate, I think student achievement is at, at the heart of all of this. You know, it is fundamentally our, the essential part of our mission is intellectual development, the academic development of our students, and there are a lot of component pieces that help to support our success there. And I don't want in any way for that part of our mission to be jeopardized by the fact that we've just gotten so big that we've made adjustments to manage the building, but the repercussions of that are having an impact on what we will provide for our kids in the classrooms.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
I just want to reiterate Dan's comment as a middle school, a former middle school teacher and middle school administrator myself. This model is the very best model that supports student learning and, and development, and Hudson's been very fortunate to really support this model. And when I first came here and went into Hudson Middle School and considered the size of the middle school, I was quite surprised because middle schools are generally 400 to 600 students, sometimes up to 700. We have a very large middle school, and I want to commend the teachers at the middle school, Dan and his leadership, certainly Diane Franklin and Jim Delune, Associate Principal, who I see sitting in the audience this evening, for making this very large middle school work very, very well to support the learning of our students. And, you know, as Dan talked about last month, we talked about that exemplary award that they receive from the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators for Achievement, and that really speaks to what's happening there, and we see evidence of that ourselves. But we still need to support their work and the learning of our students as we move forward, and so we wanted to make sure that we have a good understanding of the middle school concept, how it supports our students' learning, and I know Dan would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members have questions for Dan? Lynn?
Mr. Koki, your letter mentioned counselor-to-student ratios of 400 to 1. What, what are we seeing out there in comparable districts? There probably aren't a lot to compare to, but what is the normal?
Actually, I would, I'd kind of like to toss that question to Nancy a little bit, she has a lot, or Cory, they have a lot more experience at that.
The ideal ratio would be closer to 1 to 300, but there is, you know, you take individual building structures into consideration, but I think that would be the general recommended ratio.
Thank you.
Barb?
Dan, I have a couple of questions. I think you said this, but I want to make sure I got it. So with the teachers on carts and the impact that that's having, it's not exclusively impacting the upper grades, for example, seventh and eighth graders, it's actually impacting all grades?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be safe to say that all the grades are impacted. When we began adding the teachers on carts, a couple of years ago, we, it was sixth and seventh. Now, it's, all the grades have been impacted by that. This year, we presently have those teachers, many of those teachers working in sixth and eighth.
Okay. My, excuse me, my second question is, so several board meetings ago, we had an opportunity to hear some of the middle high teachers talk about the importance and the impact of the collaborative, collaborative time that they've had for planning and, and how that has really enhanced their teaching techniques. So these teachers that are on carts that are doing multiple grades, are they able to participate in that collaboration?
Not, not within the current frameworks, you know, that we have. We have to try to see if we can find other times where they can get together. The designated professional development days are some of the times when they're able to, to meet, but part of our system is built on the fact that there is that daily team planning, that, that opportunity for collaboration, and right now, because their schedule is sort of layered on top of the general schedule we have, they're not able to participate in those collaborative meetings.
Okay, one last question, I'm sorry to monopolize it, but, so I've been in the middle high many times, and I, the way the space is laid out, where are these classes meeting for the teachers that are on carts?
Well, we, through sort of the miracle that is Diane Franklin and Jim Delune, we've built a schedule that basically accommodates, the cart teachers move into classrooms when those teachers, those core teachers, I'll give you an example, just, I'll just use a house, you know, Raider White, for example. When the Raider White teachers are in their traditional team collaborative planning time, that's when those cart teachers come in and they will pick up kids from other houses and, and teach in those, in those classrooms.
So, but I've heard stories about there's activity, like formal scheduled activity in the cafeteria, for example, or in the back part of the cafeteria, I mean, just sort of cobbling together space to make sure that we have teaching space.
Yeah, we've done that. Orchestra is the program that's predominantly been using our, you know, our cafeteria, but, and thank goodness we have Prairie Elementary next to us because we start out the day with, I think as many as four FIED classes scheduled at the same time, and we bump over into, into Prairie. Suzie's been very cooperative in allowing us to use, use that, that facility.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Cindy.
So what I'm hearing you saying is, and obviously we have issues with an inadequate number of classrooms for the sizes of, of the houses, but I hear you also saying there are significant infrastructure challenges that you're facing too, that you're using a, an adjacent school's physical education space for, did you say four?
Yeah.
Time, four hours in the morning?
Five now.
So how are those elementary students getting their physical education if you're in their space?
Well, you know, we start a bit earlier than, than they do, and we try to optimize the time before they, before they come to, to, to school, and Suzie's, as I said, has cooperated in terms of the way she's scheduled her building a little bit to, to help us out. I mean, we've used the cafeteria as well, we use the multipurpose room, we use the gym, and we're really big fans of good weather.
So how, so how are you handling the, the meal times for students in your, in your building? Is there adequate cafeteria space for the size of the population? Is there?
I should bring Jim up here for that. We fill, we have three lunch, lunch sessions, one for each grade, and we fill it up significantly. It's, it's very full.
And if your cafeterias and your classrooms are being stretched, how are you, how does this affect music programs and language programs and, and some of those other things that are, are not located right in, in the houses? I mean, are they just, are there just caps on the number of students who can participate, or?
Well, we certainly try to steer away from that. I mean, that's also one of the tenets of our philosophy, is providing kids with as many opportunities and experiences as we can. It's why we have the exploratory program and the elective program. It's, you know, clubs and activities after school, but I think it would be fair to say that our, across the board, our music program has outstripped the facility and probably did so quite some, quite some time ago, just because of the numbers of kids who want to participate in those. And it is very, very difficult for us to, you know, look somebody in the eye and, you know, a 12-year-old and tell them, no, you can't, you know, you can't participate in this, we don't have room. That, that's a, that's a tall order for us.
So you're not doing that?
No, we don't. We, we don't do it in our, in the music programs, we, our athletic and co-curricular programs. I mean, we'll have 100 and, I think we had 160 kids out for football, 140 playing volleyball. We'll have well over 120-some kids out for cross-country basketball. Right now, we've got probably 30, I think 33 to 35 kids at seventh and eighth grade that are out, out for basketball. Yeah, it's, it's, as I said before, very difficult for us to say no to somebody who wants to experience those, you know, those opportunities, and frankly, we, we don't, we don't tell them no.
Thank you. About a year ago, it might be a little more than that, we had both Ed Lucas from the high school and Dan from the middle school talk about the facilities and what was actually happening with facilities, and some of these issues came up then. We'll take a look at that report and then send it out again to you because it's been some time since we've looked at that, and we have made some accommodations as well. I know we turned some storage space into some classroom areas, some locker room areas and so forth because of the size of students particularly participating in some of the co-curricular activities. Our next question, or?
Did you have more? Okay. Mark?
Thanks, Dan. I guess, first I just want to say, Dan, I'm an enthusiastic supporter of, of the house concept, always have been, for all the reasons you mentioned tonight and with an experience of my own two children. I mean, I, it's definitely the way to go, so I'm in that camp. I think it's definitely a testament to you and your staff that you have been able to do as well as you have considering the, the space concerns. But I do share your, your concern that, you know, you just can't continue to make, make this work. It, it is stressful on the staff, it's less than optimal, and of course, it's, it's just going to get worse. So it is something I think that is, you know, needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. And, you know, I guess Mary touched on a little bit about, you know, store, store rooms, et cetera, to classrooms, but, and, and not to put you on the spot, but I mean, do you have some, some, some sense of what could be done to this building physically now in the short term that could, you know, I mean, obviously the houses, the building's designed a certain size and, you know, bricks and mortar, things are?
Well, actually, Mark, it's sort of a work in progress. The, the landscape changes, you know, for us basically at the beginning of every year, you know, it changes for us. One year we think maybe we have a plan, and you've seen that in the past where we took some of the multipurpose room space, we took some of the, the storage space and converted to locker rooms, those are the types of things we've done in the past. We'll, when we get a sense for what it may look like, and if Hazel's numbers come true, what it may look like next year, we'll have to sit down and try to, you know, develop another, you know, another plan, but I wouldn't really be able to tell you right now, largely because we've maximized about everything, you know, that we've got.
That leads to the comments that I was going to make, Mark, about the next steps. And as you know, we have a district goal to look at the next short-term plan. The board has put on temporary hold looking at a long-term space for learning plan for both the high school and the middle school. So the next step really is to move to the facilities and grounds committee and start working on the short-term plan, which is what you're talking about. We really want to continue to point out to our community, I continue to hear that community members have a better understanding that, that we have space needs at the high school, but really, the first needs are at the middle school and then they also move to the high school. So we have space needs at both, and it's really important that we continue to communicate that to our community so that they realize it's not just one or the other, it's both.
Thanks, Mary. I, we've had some really good comments. Thanks, Dan, for, for your insights on this whole issue. You know, certainly the board has been very supportive of the house concept, we don't want to stray from that, and, you know, I applaud you and your staff's efforts in trying to deal with that. You know, I, I think your calming voice, you know, underlies some emotion that's probably a little more urgent than how you're expressing it, and I, and I'm, I'm hearing that and seeing that as well from materials that we received tonight, that this really is an issue that, you know, we have to get our facilities and grounds committee, I know they've, they have been tracking the issue, but I think we need to assign a little more urgency to making sure that we, you know, not only get this short-term plan in place but also, you know, looking forward, because we've, we've been lulled a little bit, you know, over the past year, I guess, when we had stabilization of the, of, of the growth in this community, but I have a sense that that's going to pick up again, and we're going to be, I really don't want to be behind the eight ball on that, so, you know, feel assured that, you know, we as a board are aware of it and are going to work to try to address it. Thank you. We'll move on to topics for action. First item is appoint a delegate and alternate to the upcoming school board state convention in Milwaukee, and a couple volunteers have stepped forward. Tom, Tom Holland has indicated that he'd be willing to serve as a delegate and Lynn Robson as the alternate. I certainly don't want to take it away from anybody else if they want to throw their hat in the ring, otherwise those two are, are chomping at the bit to assume that role, so I'll entertain a motion for approval of those two individuals to serve as our delegate and alternate, delegate at the state convention.
Mr. President, I have moved that we approve Tom Holland as our delegate and Lynn Robson as our backup delegate.
We have a motion by Barb.
Second.
A second by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, both Tom and Lynn. The 2010-11 budget reduction process, Mary?
This evening, we have a process before you to consider, to think about the 2010-11 budget reductions that need to be made, and I'll talk about in just a minute. Tracy Havishalene is going to join me and talk specifically about the community engagement portion of that. If we look back to the current budget, the 2009-10 budget, we experienced this year certainly a loss of revenue, particularly when we think of the, the loss of 10.4% in state aid or $2.7 million of state aid that happened for this budget. We had property valuation decrease of 2.5%. We received 1.1 million in federal stimulus dollars, and we are using fund balance dollars as well, a little over a million dollars from there. But we also reduced program operations and staff through a condensed process to the tune of about $2.3 million out of the budget, and that resulted in a budget that was decreased, the current budget was decreased from last year's budget by 2.6 million. Very significant, and certainly changed for us what we've had in the past and experienced in the past. And still, with all of that, our levy increase was slightly over 6%. So... So knowing that and look, knowing that we will next year be in the second year of the biennium state budget and the state deficit is still looming and there is talk that there may be an adjustment, another adjustment to the budget bill that may be coming. We anticipate that we will have, continue to have for next year, a loss of state aid. We won't have the federal stimulus dollars. Certainly, we're uncertain about what's going to happen with our district property valuation. Will it stay the same? Will it decrease again or, or will it increase as we've experienced in the past? And we anticipate certainly increased costs. So as we look to all of that, it's very important that we plan for these kind of reductions in our revenue and that we provide opportunities for participation for parents, students, staff, and community members in that process. So that's what we're going to talk about today, that process of budget reduction, looking towards 2010-11. And we want to make this process very clear and transparent as we move forward. So we'll start through each of those actions. I wish we had it up on the screen unfortunately, but we will be posting it on our website once it is approved. So we'll start with that and feel free to stop us as we go and ask questions for each of those steps. What you have before you is a condensed version without all of the administrative work that actually goes on behind the scenes, but it does really focus on the work of the board and the engagement of our community. So that's what's highlighted through this reduction process. So the first step certainly is what we're doing now. It's determining that budget reduction process for 2010-11. There has been administrative development that has occurred up to this point to just put this process in place. And tonight we're asking for your approval and consideration. You can see in the steps that you have, there is an asterisk behind the board approval. And each time you see that, we have plans to post and communicate this to your action, to staff and community at each step in the process. So we'll be doing that tonight and then moving forward with the next steps. Any questions about that? Okay, moving on to the next step is something new for us. Tim and the financial services staff have been working on a draft of a three-year budget forecast. So looking ahead and helping to provide information for us to look to the future and to plan ahead and use that information to make good decisions. So essentially that's been already going through a process of administrative development. It will come to the finance committee for review on November 30th and planned then to be presented at the next board of education committee as a report. It will be based on a number of assumptions. Tim and I went through those again today and we just understand that this forecast really is a forecast. It will be adjusted as we receive more updated information and we hope to just keep it rolling and adjusted and updated as more information becomes clear. So we would always have a three-year forecast going into the future to be able to make decisions. Questions?
Just, if I could, um, this sounds very challenging. I mean, I, I certainly, you know, think that long-range planning should be, should be undertaken, but you know, I guess considering all the variables we have, I mean, three years out seems, seems difficult. But I take it that's, that's, that's the goal at least, to sort of give us some wide parameters for where we stand. Typically, I don't, you know, think we've gone out that far, but just tell me a little bit about what you're thinking about while you?
Well, well, Tim's thinking quick. I'm just going to say, you know, a forecast is based on assumptions.
Right.
And so we will be sharing those assumptions with you so that you'll know what they are and if they change because of new data coming in, then we'll have to modify. And that's why it will be constantly evolving as new information comes forward. But it will help us have a bigger picture. Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, Mark, your, your comments are very accurate in that, you know, these numbers are not going to be solid, they're going to be changing, but it's going to give, give the board, hopefully the district, the board, a better idea of where, where we're heading long-term. And the numbers are, you know, they're really going to be based on what happens in the economy, what happens at the state level. They're going to be driven in a large part by that. And as Mary said, as major developments happen, we'll continue to update this budget. But it's, it will be, I think it'll be very, very beneficial from a long-range planning standpoint to have an outlook going out three years.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, moving on to number three, establishing criteria and priorities for decision-making. So knowing that we'll, we will be looking at program, operations, and staffing as we did last year, it's critical that the criteria, that we use a criteria and prioritize that criteria. And you remember to our work session with Deb Gurkey from WASB, she recommended that this is really the step for active community engagement and that's why Tracy's here to talk about that specific process, which you can see has multiple steps outlined for you. Tracy?
Starting with 3A on the criteria and priorities decision-making process, where we will start is with the principals and district administration coming together. And if you remember when Deb was talking at that work session, she talked about coming up with those guiding questions, those big questions, and how do we ask questions to get the depth that we need and to help everybody, all internal and external stakeholders understand where we're moving. This is what the responsibility of this group initially will be, is to develop those questions that we will then take out to the various groups internally and externally to develop those criteria. The process, again, engages both internally and externally, but also helps people develop that deeper understanding of how criteria can support the continued improvement that we're looking at for, as a district. That certainly as we're, we're looking and planning that we don't want to go backwards as far as what our, our vision is as a district. So we start with, again, the principals and district administration developing those questions that we can take out. And what we're going to also be using is the World Cafe model, which is a model that's more conversational and also again, provides that opportunity for more free-flowing conversation with those groups. So we can get at ideas in, in a different format than just presenting information like a focus group and just asking questions. There's more conversation going on so we can get to that depth. Once those questions are developed and that group approves the set of questions, then we will actually start the process of meeting with the various groups. So we're looking at principals and other leadership helping with the internal groups, looking at holding focus groups, for lack of a better word, with parent groups. We're also looking at community groups like Rotary and Chamber. There's a superintendent's parent advisory council that will also be participating. We want to, which is not listed here, to include high school students in that discussion. Parents of preschoolers, so looking at the moms group that we've used in the past. And really looking at, to make this successful, we need to go to where people are at and certainly having that understanding that we will try to reach people where they're at, but also having open forums so people can come, open focus group so the community at large will be invited and finding that location where we'll do that as well. So it's not just limited to those who are invited. This will also provide us an opportunity to start building that key communicators network that Deb also talked about so that we can continue to engage people if they so choose in the process as we go along. And we can develop that list and as other things arise, as they naturally will within a district, we can continue to involve people in providing more communication to people throughout the community and spreading the word. So we'll also start inviting people to participate in that. The principals and district administrators are developing the questions, but we also want to get their feedback on those questions and so that they have an opportunity to give criteria as well so they're not missing in this, this lineup here. Once all of that information is completed at around?
Tracy, can I just stop you there? Just adding on to that, when we thought about, okay, who's our primary focus here to help build the criteria? It's those who are most affected by that decision-making. And who's that going to be? It's going to be students, staff, and parents. So it's really, that's the primary focus, yet we're taking it out to others as well. But we will be engaging, you know, all of our parent groups in this process and staff members in the process because that's where the primary focus is for this. Our community members who may be non-parents would be more focused on what is the reduction target? What's it going to look like? What's it going to do to the budget? What's it going to do to my property taxes? So again, for the criteria development, although we're engaging other groups to get feedback, leadership groups in the community, we're really looking primarily at those groups that are most affected.
It is also an opportunity, an educational opportunity so people understand what we need to have in place as a district to support HSD 2025 and that continued improvement that we've been speaking of. Information after the groups are completed will be synthesized. That would be my role. It's not to prioritize, it's just to take the information, what are common themes, put that together. And then that information will be posted, sent out to those key communicators and our staff so that they will have an opportunity to comment. You know, are we, just as we did with HSD 2025 as we were going along, are we, are we really reaching people? Is it making sense? Is there stuff here that is way off? But that's our opportunity to do, to determine some of that. Again, that information will be, any of that feedback will be synthesized and then any adjustments made. And again, it'll go back to our principals and district administration to look at what the community and all of the different groups have put together. And it's their role at that point to prioritize that list of criteria and then bring that forward to the board for your final approval.
Questions on this process?
I have a question, just, and maybe you're coming to us further into this presentation, but I can't help but just go back to Dan being up here and talking about, you know, sort of the physical space issues that we have, you know, coming up. That's got to feed in here somewhere in terms of, you know, addressing those issues as part of, you know, our, our budget process and, and how are we going to meet or deal with those needs? Is that?
I would imagine that when?
Part of the questions that are going to be?
When the principals and district administration come together to develop those questions?
Sure.
I would imagine that there'd be a, okay, a how question of how are, how are we going to manage? I, I don't know exactly what that question's going to be because?
But I mean, to me, that seems like, you know, if we're, if we're doing this in a manner of trying to get, you know, outside input and focus groups, that's, to me, certainly should be part of what's, what we're going out to gather because it's, you know, impacting the budget probably in a very big way.
Well, the primary focus of this reduction process is really on operations. It's really on program operations and staffing. There will be other steps for space, but if that would develop as a theme, that would be something that we would try to incorporate into the criteria for your development. But again, we want to focus people for this portion of our conversation primarily around those three areas. Now, program certainly is affected by space, but this is the operational part of the budget that we're looking at in reductions.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I understand why, because it's purely looking at operations and, and the next couple of years' worth of, of operations budgets and staffing, that, that you say that non-parent groups are mostly interested in how it affects them economically. But I wonder if there is a place for non-parent groups to have some opportunity to give feedback? And I think about that because I am the proud graduate of two Hudson High School graduates and my kids are no longer in the district and yet I can't conceive of a time in the future where I'm not interested in what the district is doing and the choices that they're making. And I know that my trust in the district and my buy-in to the, to the plan and to the vision and to the steps that have been taken in the past really affects my trust when it comes to me voting on the big changes that are, are going to come as we get into, you know, really deep into the 21st century. So.
We do have community at large groups. So those will be open, they will be posted and I'm sure we'll put that information out to the public through our usual sources, through the newspaper and whatnot. But those community at large groups will be open to anyone within the public. Again, just underscoring what you're saying, when we met the last time with the parent advisory group, there was one parent in that group who did not have children in the district at the time that, when we started the elementary, the referendum for River Crest. And that was, those meetings that we went out and did, the board went out and presented to the community were really important. That's how she stayed connected to what was going on. So yes, we do need to include community groups at large. We're just really making sure we're focusing and, and doing special invitations to those groups that we know have a very big interest in what's going on.
So let me just highlight what you, what you said, self-selected.
Correct.
People who really have an interest and want to come and want to learn will have forums in which they're welcome to attend.
Correct.
And give input.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right from the, so they will be part of the criteria development group?
Right from the beginning.
Correct.
Thank you.
And they can also become key communicators.
Yes.
As well. It's my turn to go on. All right, moving on to number four. This is the preliminary review of 2010-11 staffing levels for reallocation, transfer, and reduction. Each year internally, we look at our staffing levels. That's part of the staffing process, the preliminary work that Nancy does in the HR office, we do in student services, we do in learning services to move that forward. So this is internal administrative work, really looking at, if we moved our element, for example, if we moved our elementary students forward to next year, how many teachers would we need? We've had that conversation with you before. So that's the work that we're doing to look at that initially. Last year, when we looked at enrollment trends by course and so forth at the high school and looked at moving forward students at the middle school, we realized that we, by moving two teachers from the high school to the middle school, we would, if we didn't move those teachers, we would have lower class sizes in the high school than we did in the middle school. So this is an internal look at all those kind of factors with the administration, really looking at our trends, looking at our student data and starting to develop conclusions around that, but then bringing it to personnel and moving it forward through this process of reduction, which might be just transferring teachers. It may be no transfers, we don't know without doing that work first. So things that could come out of it are relocation of resources, transfer of staff positions or reductions that we see that are necessary. That really doesn't require any board action. That really becomes part of the whole process of finally developing a preliminary recommendation to you. So moving on to five, then, it's identifying 2010-11 budget reduction target range. So given the information that we have about the budget, given the assumptions, the three-year forecast, budget forecast, what, what dollar amount do we need to target to reduce the budget? We're looking at a range for that. And that would first start with administrative development, financial services, move into the finance committee in January. move into the finance committee in January, at the end of January, in preparation for the board's consideration and eventual approval on February, the February, um, board meeting. And it's really based on data and, um, looking at how does this affect the budget levy and mill rate and our taxpayers and program as well. Moving along. Um, six is to develop the administrative recommendation for program operations and staff reduction. This is really, again, um, internal work. Uh, it starts with administrative development, but then it moves into each of our sites for full involvement of our staff members. So, um, staff members at each site would be considering their site and their work and looking for them, um, seeking from them suggestions about how can, what could be done in that site or that location, um, to help reduce the budget and to contribute to that. So this is how their ideas will be sought and generated in that process. Um, seven is presenting the preliminary administrative recommendation for the reductions in program operations and staff based on that, um, target range, that amount that has already been determined by the board. So, um, administrators certainly first, before this list comes out and is public, um, and again, it's not just staff, it's program and operations as well. Um, but staffing is a lot of what we do and delivering those programs and our operations. Uh, administrators would meet with any staff members who are on those, that list prior to it becoming public at the board meeting, at the, um, March 9th board meeting. And then that list would be posted, um, and communicated to all staff right after that board meeting. So that's the first time there actually is a list, um, with those recommendations, um, from preliminary recommendations from the administration after all this work pulling that together based on the criteria that, that you've approved. And then eight is, um, the board taking final action on those reductions. And, um, the administrators, uh, principals, uh, directors, myself will be putting that together, um, considering any revisions along the way, putting information together based on your questions and things that you would like us to pursue before you take final action. And, um, we would want you at this time to be really looking at some guiding questions. You know, up to this point, you, along the way, have approved a number of things. You've approved this process. So we would ask the, the question, was, um, and hopefully this would guide your decision-making, was the process of decision-making followed? And so, um, that would be something we would ask you to consider as you're thinking about this. You've also, um, approved a criteria. So the question would be, does the recommendation align with the criteria that the board has approved? And then finally, um, you've approved a targeted reduction amount, that range, and does the recommendation, uh, fall within that targeted reduction range that the board has approved? So looking at those kind of questions as guiding the work of the board and final decision-making, that would occur in April. Following, um, the, uh, board's action in April, administrators would be meeting with individual staff members, uh, the next day affected by that decision. And then, um, should there be staff layoff notices, those would be distributed, um, before May 1st so that all staff would know when that was going to occur. We expect that the week of April 26th. Any questions or comments that you have?
Mary, I have a question regarding, um, and given the fact that this is just sort of a process that we're going to, um, follow, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with eight and nine where we, and I think I understand what you're saying, but, um, you know, as, as maybe a first-time reader that, you know, may go on the website and take a look at this and say, well, April 6th, we're gonna be dealing with staff layoffs. I, I guess I would, I would prefer seeing that phrased in a way as if the board decides to, you know, take, go in that direction, that that would be the timeframe for doing that as opposed to, you know, this, in a way, sort of presumes that that's an action that we're gonna take. And I'm not prepared to, you know, have that built into a, a process like that. I would prefer to sort of have worded in a way that, you know, if that's an option that's taken, that, you know, that we'll approach it at that.
I certainly could understand that and, um, see if this is agreeable, Dan. If we change that to say, the Board of Education takes final action and approves staff layoff, uh, staff layoffs instead of list, if applicable-
Approves any proposed.
If applicable, or-
True, something to that effect.
As necessary. Thank you.
Yep, yep. And I think that's, um, same way with the April 7th item as well as number nine. I think we should put some qualifiers in there. That's just my suggestion. I don't know if board members disagree with me.
I also, at this point, don't wanna commit myself to being locked into the, whatever the, the broad plan recommendation is in March, just because it followed the procedure, meets the criteria, and is the amount of, of, of money that has to be reduced. I, I think that there, I mean, I understand why that's important and that certainly should be, I mean, we shouldn't be putting our administrators in a position where we're asking them to do some things by our guidance and then, and then pulling the rug out. And yet, I, I feel like at this point, at, at this point in the process, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna be locked into passing a recommendation carte blanche because it needs those three criteria. I think that might not be the whole criteria.
Well, I would hope if there are other criteria, we need to make sure that when the board approves that, that we consider that, and you'll have the opportunity certainly to take action and to add to that criteria i- if you would like to. But, um, you know, those are guiding questions and, and we hope that the board would consider those very strongly during this process. Um, you, you still will be taking action and making decisions about that. Um, but we will be using, uh, that criteria. Uh, we wanna be real transparent in this process. We wanna let people know, um, how we're moving forward, uh, what we're basing the decisions on, the recommendations on, and, um, if we don't honor that criteria and make it valuable, then the process really doesn't work.
And then the other part of it too is that, um, we just have to be clear upfront that this calendar gives us 30 days, less than 30 days, from the time of the recom- that we receive the preliminary administrative recommendations to the point where we're making a final decision. This year, it took us a lot longer than that. It wasn't calendared to take us longer, but I think it took us three meetings instead of just the two that are proposed here. So we just have to, as a board, we're committing to this calendar. We're gonna have to commit to that decision time as well, so.
Um, I wanna comment on that. Um, during this, um, development process, as you know, I was giving you feedback that I had talked to many other administrators who had gone through such process and trying to take the best of what they told me about the process. One of the things that you experienced last time, we all experienced last time, was it, it's very difficult once those programs, operations, and particularly staff positions are announced. And, um, everyone I talked to who had had experience with this said that should not be a long time period. It needs to certainly be enough to get the information you need to make decisions, and we believe we can provide that to you in that month. But that time period needs to be, um, closer than it does far apart because of the, you know, once you announce a person's position happens to be on the list for consideration, it, it's very difficult for that individual and for the organization, the people that are close to that person in the organization. And, um, you don't want that to be a really long process. You want it to have enough time to make a good decision and get the data that you need. And, and that's what we believe we can provide you in that month. And so that's what I kept hearing was don't, um, don't have that be a six-month process. Don't have it two, three, and so forth. And so that's why it is the way it is, which is different than how we've done it last time.
I support the shorter time period. I just, when we get there, we're agreeing to that.
Any other board members' comments? Lynn?
Mr. President, I just wanted to comment that I, I, I do fully support the, the process that we're going to be going through. I like that we're involving stakeholders, you know, especially, you know, our administrators and our principals and the parent groups who can give input to help us establish criteria. Nobody wants to be looking at this. None of us wanna be talking about this again. We didn't like talking about it last year, but I like a process where involving people where they can help us establish criteria to make these decisions, so.
Tom?
Uh, just a comment regarding that, and it, it's almost a, um, an opposite kind of view to this in that we're kind of forced, we are forced because of the economic situation to have to look at the situation and, uh, and look deep into what we're doing. It's much easier for us when we're, when we're economically healthy to, to, just to continue as is. I think it'll be a healthy exercise for us. Uh, it'll call for some, I think, some courage as well for us to really think about what's really important to our district, meaning to our community and in light of H, HSD 2025 and, and so forth, and have to look at maybe pretty hard some of the, some of the things that we've been doing for a long time and ask ourselves the question, should we continue those things? So I think, you know, it is a difficult thing. There's no doubt, and I agree with Lynn completely regarding that. However, I think it can also be a very healthy thing for us in that regard.
I think Dan pointed out, um, certainly the most difficult is when we get down to the point of any staff positions. We know that affects people in our organization. We value the work that they do, and it's hard to have those conversations. Um, as you said, we wish we didn't have to even consider that. Our problem is, when we think about our operating budget, the large portion of our operating budget is staff, and that's how we deliver our programs. And, um, it's hard for us to take a significant amount of reduction, whatever that amount is that we determine, and really not touch staff. Um, that's, that's the unfortunate, very difficult part of this whole process. And I don't think there, I know there's not a person sitting around the table that wants to do this. I know our principals certainly don't want to work through this, um, and our staff would choose not to as well. But we also have to be conscious of the impact on our taxpayers during this time, and that three-year budget forecast is going to help us, um, understand a bigger picture as we move forward to support these decisions. Um, but what I, what I heard was, Dan, you'd like us to, um, qualify, uh, where we've talked about staff reductions because they may, um, not be supported by the board at some point in the future.
Yeah, I, I think as a, as a process, um, format like this, I, I, I don't wanna build any presumptions into it. I, I want it to be just sort of, we're gonna, you know, follow these steps. And, you know, at this point in time, we don't really know where it's gonna lead us. But I, I just, wherever we have, you know, that's what struck me as part of that format as being a little bit, you know, as the way it was stated. I don't think it was intended to be that way, uh, as, as somewhat presumptuous that, that, that might be a decision that we'll be making and, and it may not be.
Well, I guess what I would probably do, if this is all right with the board members, um, the opening paragraph says, the last line, "Budget reductions will be considered in the areas of program operations and staff." Um, then I would go to number seven and probably say, "Present preliminary administrative recommendation for reductions," and just take it off there. Um, I will have to, um, keep it on with the layoff notices, you know, if necessary and so forth. But I would look that way, and if you give the administration the, um, direction to go that, that's how we would reword it for you. And keep the process the same.
Sure. Okay. Uh, this is a topic for action, so if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion for approval of following this budget reduction process.
Move to approve the budget reduction process.
Motion by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Tracy, for your input. Next item is the resolution authorizing appointment of the school crossing guards. Nancy?
Yep. The resolution is on page 11 of your board material. The school crossing guard resolution was considered by the Governance and Policy Committee on September 28th and forwarded to the full board, uh, for, for this November meeting. Um, this resolution is required under Wisconsin law. Um, the Board of Education takes action first on the resolution, and the approval is subject then to the action of each of the governing boards of the city, the village, um, and the townships. Um, lacking, um, such resolution, the school district would not have the authority to continue to employ, um, and use school crossing guards. And currently, the district has nine crossing guard positions. Two are at the high school, one at the middle, one at Hudson Prairie, one at North Hudson, one at Willow River, and two at EP Rock. The resolution requires a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
Does the resolution have to be read as the motion?
At least the key elements of it, I suppose, for everyone's, um, understanding.
Is, uh, is there any questions for Nancy?
Just, just have a question. I certainly support the school crossing guards. I'm just, I'm just curious, when I, when I read this earlier today, Nancy, do you know the, the reasoning, the rationale for, for actual, uh, a board resolution for the hiring of crossing-
I actually do. I do know.
Oh, could you, could you give me the shirt?
Yeah, because I read, I read the statute. It was pointed out to me, and, uh, I think it was never noticed previously. Um, but, um, I did call WASB and I did talk to one of their attorneys there, and it goes back decades. And, um, actually, school districts do not, without this resolution, have the authority to, um, to, to employ school crossing guards. Cities, villages, and townships have that authority. And so, it, for us to, um, take over that authority, which many school districts do and we have, um, just like a lot of other school districts, you need to have a resolution. And then the, um, governing bodies of those other, um, entities need to approve it. And essentially, it has to do with using, um, school district, um, funds for duties otherwise designated to other entities. And, um, i- i- if you consider the crossing guards, the safety of our students en route to our various schools, um, all of our city, our city, our village, and our townships all would have an investment in the safety of our students. They all have kids at the high school. They all have kids at the middle school. So that's where it comes from. It's kind of interesting.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you. Uh, Nancy, if we were to sort of jump into the therefore be it resolved with that-
Yeah.
Okay. Cindy?
I move therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education District of Hudson as follows. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 120.13, Pren 31, the Board of Education may appoint and employ adult school crossing guards for the protection of persons who are crossing a roadway in the vicinity of a school. The school crossing guards must wear insignia or uniforms which designate them as school crossing guards and must be equipped with signals or signs to traffic, to direct traffic to stop at school crossings. This resolution is subject to approval by the governing bodies of all cities, villages, and towns located in the whole or in part within the school district of Hudson.
Okay, we have a motion by Cindy. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Barb. Uh, any discussion? Now we'll have a roll call vote.
Van Loonan, aye.
Crimmins, aye.
Trenohoy, aye.
Holland, aye.
Kaiserzad, aye.
Robson, aye.
Motion is approved. Okay. Thank you, Nancy. We'll move on to consent items. Uh, Mr. Holland, do you have to leave us? Okay, okay. Uh, approval of the regular enclosed session in October 20- Approval of the regular enclosed session on October 27th, 2009, special board meeting minutes, personnel, and expenditures, and the youth options. So I'll entertain a motion of those consent items, and if someone could give me the expenditure amount as well.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items, including a motion that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of
Thank you. We have a motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. And we'll move on to item E with the YMCA, and Tom's going to step up for a second. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the YMCA Camp St. Croix expenditures. We have a motion by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Tom's rejoining us here. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee, since Brian Bill is not with us this evening, Barb has agreed to cover that report for us. Thanks, Barb.
Okay. Mr. President and board members, the Finance Committee met and had four things on the agenda. We certainly considered ratification of the, what was then the tentative agreement for 2009-11 between the school district and the custodial unit. We also reviewed and recommended for certification the 2009-10 budget and levy. We had some discussion with the administration around surveying the community, really community engagement regarding the 2010-11 budget process, and we've heard more about that tonight. And then we adjourned to a closed session to discuss negotiations with the other union groups.
Okay. Thanks, Barb. Any questions or comments regarding Finance Committee agenda? If not, Barb, you can hold the floor and talk about learning and program development.
All right. So the Learning and Program Development Committee met late in October. We had three items that we, we talked about. We actually started off being joined by three of our district counselors, Chris Strupp from North Hudson, Angela Goble from the middle school, and Lori Russini from the high school. These counselors came in and talked to the committee about the work that they have been involved in and implementing a K-12 comprehensive school counseling program. This particular program is based on national and state standards and is a comprehensive style program to serve all of our K-12 students. The program has a three-to-five-year implementation timeline, and here in Hudson, we're actually at, just at the beginning stages of the implementation. The counselors really talked to us about the principles of the program, which includes the fact that it does involve all students, but it also includes parents, teachers, and community involvement, and there is a curriculum that's based on these state and national standards. One aspect of the delivery is a parent-student counselor meeting. This particular program was piloted in the eighth grade last year for the first time, and the, the middle high counselor actually talked about what a success it was that these meetings, which occurred during the day, were attended by 58% of the students and their parents. So a relatively high turnout for, for a daytime meeting, which they do intentionally to ensure there's engagement between the parents, the students, and the counselors on these issues. The second topic we talked about, Director Corey McIntyre talked about a $10,000, two-year grant that Hudson School District has received to serve homeless students that are in our school district and the federal legislation that requires us as a school district to provide minimum services to those students. It's the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistance Act. One constant in a homeless student's experience can be the school environment. And so Hudson is, Corey, with two of the social workers at the middle high and the senior high are working on their specific plans to actually use that grant and incorporate some plans to support that student population for us. And the last thing we talked about were course proposals. The committee supported the addition of, let's see, I wrote down an acronym that I don't remember, Project Lead the Way. We're going to add Principles of Engineering. You'll recall, last year, we added the introduction to engineering design as a course offering in the high school. So we're really now adding the second phase of that curriculum. So Principles of Engineering will be a course offering next year. We're also adding Mandarin Chinese II and Renewable Energy, both of which are directly addressing areas in HSD 2025 for us. That's it. I said Chinese.
And, and we're not actually adding them, we're recommending them to the board, right?
You should see those at the next board meeting in December.
Okay. Thanks, Barb.
Dan, if I, just, just a real quick question for Barb. What, this will be easy. The homeless student population, it just disturbs me to know we have that, but what, we have any numbers?
We do. This past year, we had 25 students, which was double from the year before, which was double from the year before. So our trend data is suggesting, you know, a rapid increase, and that's just partially a sign of the times, partially due to we're better identifying them. So we need to get some supports and procedures in place to ensure that they can stay in school and not be bouncing around to various districts as they change their residence.
Sure.
And we really want to keep students who attend school here in, in school in Hudson. So we're tracking that closely.
And these aren't all students living in cardboard boxes or under bridges. Some of them are in shelters and they're in, you know, various other locations, but there probably are also kids in our district who are not in the, you know, safest of living situations as homeless too.
Wow. Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, Diane, any citizens' requests? I guess that's about it.
No, one more thing I just have to point out, that this, this paperless board meeting, just in the paper that would have been at this table in just the board book, saved two reams of paper.
Thanks, Cindy.
Back and forth, I mean, two-sided copies of two reams of paper.
Thanks for that little tidbit. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. What he wants to. Motion by Tom, second by Cindy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thank you.